All right, it's seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to a regularly scheduled meeting. So hopefully, this agenda is pretty long, but hopefully the things will even out since we'll be meeting every week going forward. I'd like to happily and sadly welcome our town attorney to the meeting. She had to escape a hurricane on her planned vacation and decided to still join us this evening. I'm happy to be here. Happy to have you, and you are ordered to go back on vacation because of your legal meetings tonight. But we do appreciate you getting here, thank you. We have several proclamations next week. If there are no comments or questions about those, we can move right into our long agenda, which starts with a public hearing, which is, what do we have here? It's an ordinance to authorize acquisitions of a temporary easement on property owned by BSPB Monroe LLC for public use by condemnation for the 100 Metro Rail Access Improvements Project for construction of public transportation facilities at 560 Hernan Parkway, fee simple permanent and temporary easements on property at 593 Hernan Parkway, fee simple permanent and temporary easements on the property at 570 Hernan Parkway, and fee simple permanent and temporary easements on the property which is located at 575 Hernan Parkway. And we'll have concurrent staff reports on this, both tonight and next week, with separate public hearings, which I do believe will all require a roll call vote. And I'm gonna turn it over to our town attorney, I think he might introduce his first, and then we'll go from there. We've got John Irish here as well from Department of Public Works. Good evening.
Good evening. With us tonight are myself and John Irish, who have been working internally on these issues for quite a while now. Also with us this evening is outside council Courtney Harden, who is very experienced in the areas of transportation products, projects, and public use, condemnations, takings, and the like. She is, has a special license or certification appointment from the Attorney General of the Commonwealth of Virginia to handle these types of cases, and she has been involved for just a few months now, helping us trying to acquire these properties to construct the necessary transportation facilities over at our new metro station, i.e. bus bays, bus stations, and other improvements and on. I would like to start with Mr. Irish, who will tell us a little bit about the project and its history, and why it's necessary, and then Ms. Harden will tell us kind of how we got to the point we're at now that we need to have you take this action at the public hearing next week.
Okay, so that being said, for, I'll say this obviously next week for the audience, but this project goes back a number of years. I believe the first genesis was about 2012, when this and other projects were contemplated. And without going into major detail, there were concept studies, there were public hearings, there were several interactions, and as a result of all that, there was an ordinance that was adopted by the town council at the time to proceed with the project that was actually called the Metro Intermodal Access Improvements, which we affectionately call Bus Base. What you see on this slide is essentially the final and adopted concept. What it presents is, on this top slide in the center, this sidewalk right here is what we call the promenade. This leads from Hernan Parkway, which is this main four-lane highway here, leading to the pavilion down here at the Billows Toll Road. So this will come up, meet the Hernan Parkway, and on either side of where that point is, we have two bus bays, one for buses on the south side, one on the north side. And then we also have two vehicular drop-off areas, both on north and south side, right here. At this intersection, crossing Hernan Parkway, this will be signalized. It also has pedestrian signalization, ADA accessibility, there will be some bus shelters at both of these locations. And this is just a little bit of detail that was from a previous slide we produced, but this gives you the general picture of where these things sit related to the access down to the pavilion. What this does, which I'll show in more detail, is affect obviously these properties on both sides of either side of the pathway, and it results in dealing with four different property This is kind of a rendering of the same scenario, just to give you a visual of what the current expectation is. Obviously, this is very schematic, meaning it's not exactly gonna be a depiction of this. So this is a more detailed engineering drawing, and what you can see starting to show is different areas that will be necessary to be taken in various forms of property rights to construct these. And essentially, it falls into three different categories. Temporary construction easements are simply the area that is determined by the engineers that are used for the actual physical construction of these facilities. They will, after the work is completed, become turned back over to the property owner. That's consequently why they're called temporary. The second kind are easements that are, can be utilized for utilities that are relocated or in this particular area, or some other piece of the work that we don't need to physically take the property as a fee simple sort of transaction, but just gives us the right to maintain, to work on, to use as we need for, like sidewalks and things of that nature. And then the last is permanent taking, where the physical boundaries of the work are actually going to encroach onto what is not considered part of our right-of-way today in that Hernan Parkway corridor, and that requires us to essentially take the property and compensate the property owner for those. And as I mentioned, there are basically four different property owners. This one here is owned by what's called Parkview Executive Center, or what we know as the Lerner's. This is what was, I don't know if this is accurate exactly, but it's Hernan Parkway Investors, which is also known as the Ketter Building. This up here is Monroe Parkway Joint Ventures, and this is also a part of, I guess, that's got the PSBJ. That's the first one, PSPBP Monroe Limited Corporation. So for each of these properties, that's why we have the four different staff reports and ordinances, which outline the specificity of each of these, the types of rights of way, easements, et cetera, that we are looking to acquire. And on each of those in the staff report, you will see a table that actually specifically shows the square footage that we are talking about, the type of easement or the taking we're looking at, the unit price, which was based on appraisals that were done for the town by a certified appraiser, and that also equates to the dollar value that is associated with these appraisals. And I'll let Courtney go into the detail, but these dollar values of these ordinances establishes our baseline of what the town is considered to be compensating these properties, property owners for, for these easement takes. The last slide is essentially taking that same drawing, and I just color-coded this so that you can see. The red column for the four different properties is the taking, the green is what we call permanent easements, and quite honestly, that is specifically for the two locations of the signals, the poles for the signal right here. Yellow is utility easements, and the blue is a temporary construction easement. And if you looked at this table, there's actually only three of the properties that were taken right-of-way taking. This fourth property is right here, equates to, which is the first easement, the first ordinance, 43 square feet of temporary construction easement. So that is essentially worth, according to the appraiser, about $100, but we still have to list it there, just like anything else. So that is kind of the history, the detail, and I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Courtney.
As Lisa mentioned, I do have an appointment from the Attorney General's office to do eminent domain work. We go through a process every two years of getting reappointed and re-certified, and I was retained by the town to work with them on this particular project, and at the point that we, at the point that this town had reached an impasse in their negotiations. These appraisals were done by a certified Virginia licensed real estate appraisal, real estate appraiser. He came to the fair market value. He found this based on comparable properties. He evaluated it using the full area ratio and looking at the developability of the parcels in the context of the comprehensive plan, and all of the exciting things that are happening here in Hernan, and all the benefits that can be given to a property that's situated so closely to the metro. I am in active negotiations with all of the property owners. I have spoken with either them or their attorneys, and what I've explained to everybody is that we need to get the project moving. And so this is a mechanism under the law by which we can file the certificate of take, de-feasible title transfers. That means most of it transfers. We can go ahead and start the work, we can enter the property, we can start construction. Indefeasible title for the total transfer of the property does not occur until the point that we either agree on a price, or a jury tells us what the fair market value is. Filing the certificate of take does not at all mean that we are stopping negotiations. It just means that we are essentially acquiring the property to be able to move forward. There is ample time, six months before we even have to file a certificate, or a petition of condemnation to start the lawsuit, although by agreement, you can extend that. We are required by the law, under the law, to put the fair market value that we have, that the appraiser has retained, into the circuit court the date that we file for the certificate of take, meaning that the landowner has access to that money within a couple of days. So it's a purchase, it's an acquisition, they can have it. And then whatever additional amount, if there is an additional amount, then they would get that at the end. I think that answers the question.
So the ordinance that you are being asked to approve authorizes myself, the manager, and Courtney to take the action of filing the necessary paperwork in court to, I will say, stop the clock. And we deposit, the town will actually deposit the fair market value funds that have been determined by the appraisals into court. As Ms. Harden said, they'll be available to the landowners at that point, and we can continue to, what that allows us to do is begin our project, which clearly is not visible yet. The metro station is visible, very much a matter of imminent occurrence. So that allows us to continue to negotiate if the property owners desire to do so, and if we reach an agreement, then we can enter an order, and they can, we have to deposit more funds, then we will have to come back to council to get authorization to do that. And what it does is also allows us to go ahead and proceed with any other necessary details, legal or otherwise, that need to happen to move negotiations and the project along. So that's the ordinance that you're being asked to approve. Questions for any of us?
Actually, I could just chime in with two more points. The other element to why this is important for us to get on top of quickly, it, from a functional perspective, is obviously metro will be open very soon, and this is a integral part of the transportation network that we envision for our side of the metro landing. Second part is, this is, the majority of this project is grant-funded. We're getting pressure from their funding agency to start burning that money down and start spending it and get this project done, or fear of losing it. And because they, they're looking at other priorities in the region, and they're saying if you're not, this isn't that important to you, then we might want to re-apply this money elsewhere. So we have gotten put on notice to get this project moving. So those are two functional reasons why it is also important for us to move forward as expeditiously as possible.
Okay, questions or comments for the staff, particularly questions? Jen and Sigourney?
So, Bill, maybe you answered it, because I was just, so the numbers are high. I didn't know how, because it started at $100, and then I read the next one, I'm like, oh, this is a lot of money. So is this coming, where is the money coming from? First, now what you just explained is that we do have to deposit the money, so that's part of the grant, or that's?
Yes, and we have, we have the money.
We have the funds, yeah. We have the funds that we will put in, and obviously that, once it all happens, we can then take it back and apply against the grant, it would be reimbursed.
I see, okay.
We'll float a small loan for a period of time.
Okay.
Just one point of clarification. One of the reasons is, this obviously, Hernan Parkway is the dividing line between H-Toc on the south metro pavilion side, and the north, which is not, so you have a very large variance in your FARs. So when the appraisals are done, the property on the north is considerably less expensive than on the pavilion side.
That makes sense. And so, again, triggering this, and Courtney, I think this is what you just said, but triggering this just allows us to, so will we start the bus, assuming we pass this next week, et cetera? So when do we then start the bus?
The process would be that once the certificate is filed and we're able to move forward, the very first step would be to authorize, or to get authorization from VDOT to go into what we consider the construction phase, but at the same time, we can also authorize our utilities to start doing the relocation. And quite honestly, the only utility we're talking about here that's not within our right-of-way and requires these easements is our good friends Dominion, which are notoriously difficult to get with. So the quicker we can get them on board and start scheduling and so on, the utilities is the main thing that will happen first, and then getting authorization from VDOT for construction, because we need that authorization to even go out to bid.
Okay. And then, of course, because of the legal, what eminent domain allows us, we can do this, this triggers that and starts that process, and then, of course, we then just continue to figure out what the actual price is gonna be.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay, Sigourney? Is, I think, a couple of things. Is there any other way to address this other than eminent domain with expeditiousness?
No. I wish there was, but, so to alleviate that in your mind, not every kind of morgue, and not every kind of morgue for every project has the ability to do this. This is what's called the quick take process. And the quick take process is available to, obviously, VDOT and to condemning authorities who are doing projects that need to be done immediately, and where there's no question as to whether or not it's for public purpose. In this case, it's clearly for a public purpose, it's time to move forward, therefore, we're allowed to proceed in this way. There are many, many other hoops if you are doing something that is not, may not be for a public purpose, or might not be for transportation. So this is absolutely the way to go forward with it.
And we talked a little bit, I think, in Lisa's office about the jury, and can you remind me who it's composed of, if it goes to jury?
Sure. In the event that we have to proceed to file a petition and condemnation, which is essentially a complaint, you know, that's how you start the matter, and we go to trial. The jury is made up of, jury or, the jury is made up of landowners in this jurisdiction, so in the town of Hernan, because that is who our jury assembly has determined to be the people who can decide what the fair market value is.
So not Fairfax County, but specifically?
Okay.
Okay, that's good. And I guess the other question I have, are you gonna be speaking next week when we do the public hearing?
I can.
Is that the plan? Is that the plan?
I would imagine.
I think, I think we had discussed that, and it was simply about whether you wanted her here or not, whether you wanted her here or not to ask questions, to answer questions.
Well, I think it's prudent, I mean, she's, you're the subject matter expert, and this is an unusual situation, and the questions that Sigourney's asking, I mean, are, I think, on all of our minds, like, wait, we don't do this often, like, why are we doing this and why are we able to? So I think that having you there would be valuable.
If I can put a point on that, too, the reason why is that most of our projects are VDOT-run. So VDOT handles all this messy workforce normally. This is a town of Hernan project, so therefore, we're an agency that does it. So normally, our hands are clean because VDOT ends up pushing this out a little worse.
Well, the reason I mention that is that I think for purposes of expressing our view of why we're doing this, emphasis on the fact that it's a quick take, it's for a public purpose, otherwise it wouldn't be allowed. And the other, the other point that you brought up in the meeting in Lisa's office, that eminent domain is very difficult in this state.
Yes.
I think the emphasis on that is very important, because people, especially people like me, when we see eminent domain, feel uncomfortable using it. But if we know that this is something that's very restricted, that this is one of the most difficult states to use eminent domain. Also, the term condemnation, condemnation, I think is a little confusing to a population that they assume that we're condemning the property, which is...
You mean for flights?
Yes, exactly. So just sort of emphasizing that it's not that kind of condemnation.
Okay, we'll do.
Yeah, Sigourney, I actually kind of went over it, because I was a council member in New Jersey, and eminent domain was a lot easier being a home rule state. I think it'd be very important for people to understand that eminent domain is not very easy to do here. In fact, it's like 47 of 50, I think, like Wyoming and Alaska, because water rights has tougher jurisdictions in here, so.
Did you Google us? You know, they'd give us grades.
I Google a lot of things.
It's just house number mechanic.
No, yeah, no, but I mean, I think, I think it's, yeah, I think it's important, because, you know, people do, you know, especially when people are, you know, these are my rights, and, you know, governments infringing on, you know, said rights, and this isn't the case at all, it's a trial by peers, and it's a, the quick fix isn't a quick fix at all, it's kind of drawn out from somewhere.
Right, I mean, the quick fix, sitting here today, if I had to give you an estimate, the quick fix could be two years from now before we can actually get a verdict on the amount.
Quick in government time.
It's a process.
Exactly. And as you said, there is a, there is a website that gives each state a grade as to whether or not they are really good for property owners' rights, or really bad. We get an A. In Virginia, for property owners' rights, not for the...
Well, I think the reason, the fear is there is because the stories like this that make it to the news are when, you know, you're riding an interstate and you're taking grandma's house, and it makes the news, and it sounds like you could blink your eye and lose your house. And that's not what we're doing, and it's not simple to do in any case.
It's way more than I find this in Maryland.
Because I do anticipate we're gonna get some concern from the community. I wouldn't be surprised at all.
Bill, did you?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Sheila? So, my question was timing. So what's the maximum amount of time this can take? Because if we're saying possible getting this stopped open in 2020?
But we get to start. Once, once, if this ordinance is approved, and we file the quick take and deposit the money, we get to start.
And does this mean we only start on the engineering, or we can move?
We could be finished and not have settled the case.
We can still be finished, we're just, we're just going back and forth totally about how much we're paying, and there is nothing else.
The engineering is 100% complete already.
Okay.
Which is probably part of the reason VDOT is like, hey, aren't you working on this?
So, but to answer your question, VDOT went through their files a couple of years ago, and they found some, what do they call them? Orphan files. And they took the 50-some out of us that are condemning authority attorneys, they parsed them out to us, and they said, these are over 25 years old, go for it, figure out how to fix them. And for various insubstantial reasons, they had never gotten done. The certificate of take was filed, but the final order, where I said that indefeasible title is transferred, was never agreed on for various insubstantial reasons. We fixed them all. I fixed my 10, you know, everybody fixed their 10, and we brought everything up to X date. But there is no time limit per se for the condemning authority. There's interest, and it's big. So we are, you know, motivated to go as quickly as possible with a reasonable pace. So I would say it is between two and four years would be, four years would be the real outset. I really think two years would be the limit on this kind of a project.
Thank you. Other questions? Sigourney?
Thank you, Madam President. I think this might be, but maybe the staff, just as a matter of disclosure, I noticed in the ordinance, we don't talk about quick take or anything as far as what we're discussing here. Why is that?
I would say it's not, it's not...
We don't mention eminent domain, exercising or executing.
No. And, and these are words that are used interchangeably. Condemnation is considered interchangeable with eminent domain. Someone may recognize eminent domain.
When you say eminent domain, it's red flags to a lot of people. You say quick take.
But this is, right, and this would be a judge that would need to scrutinize the ordinance.
Okay, so let me stop there. So I guess what I'm asking is, on the agenda topic, quick take or eminent domain is not on the agenda title. I guess that's a question for, for us, it's not there.
I don't see it being a legal question. I don't think Ms. Harden or I see it as being a legal question.
I'm not, I guess I'm not asking that. Let me ask it a different way.
Are you asking for a notice question?
Yes, yes.
I think that would be best, yeah. It would not be a legal notice question either, I don't think.
Right, but in the interest of transparency, don't you wanna tell people exactly what we're doing?
So, so the answer to that is that we have. So what I, so under the law, before we can go forward, I have to provide a notification to each of the landowners that says, within 30 days, not short, longer than 30 days, or shorter than 30 days, and not longer than 45 days. So they know exactly the 15-day window. The town is filing a certificate of take.
I get the process. So again, and apologize, maybe I'm asking, making the statement correctly. We have people that want to know what's going on in the town, to be able to comment, and if they don't know, there's an agenda item regarding eminent domain or quick take, we're gonna hear about it, you didn't tell us, you're not disclosing what you're doing.
So are you asking to change the word condemnation to eminent domain if they're interchangeable?
Yeah.
We could not do that without re-advertising it.
Then that's where I'm starting to get a little bit confused on why we just don't do it, tell people what we're doing.
Because it's not legally necessary to do that.
Well, okay, but shouldn't we go beyond that? Just under disclosure?
Sure, I think if, I think that if we can do that, we should do that, but in situations...
I'll just go on the record and say I think we should have done that, and I think for future projects like this, wording, putting things on the agenda, it's probably a good thing to make it clear.
And I'll take that, this is something we've not done before, in my, in my memory. And so we were just modeling it based on how others do it, and...
This would look like these were...
Yeah, so it wasn't, we were trying to hide anything, it was just we're trying to model.
I, in no way, I'm sinuating anyone who's trying to, so I'm just proactively trying to prevent what I know will come. Which brings me to the other thing. The, I think they're entangled, in a good way, I hope, cost and jury of the peers. So is that jury of the peers relegated or segmented to commercial landowners, or owners specifically Hernan?
So it's a good question. It is land... So it's a good question. It is landowners, not commercial.
So we could get someone, a landowner who does not own commercial property in the town.
You can get an entire jury full of them, yes. What you cannot get is apartment owners or apartments, residents. You can't get condominium owners, they own land.
Sure, I wanted to make the distinction. So we could conceivably get non-commercial landowners. Which then brings me to my other question and concern is the cost. If, in fact, it does stay in litigation for a couple of years, should we, as a council, be thinking about a budget for this in the out years? I know we've got great negotiation and the law's on our side, but what's our upside? What's our sort of scale for how much this will cost us?
So when, in order for me to be able to justify to you, like, let's say we take one of the counteroffers that we have, I'm just going to use numbers. Say we've offered a hundred thousand dollars, the other side has offered two hundred thousand dollars. And I've looked over the basis of their decision and then I write up a justification based on my knowledge, which is they got a full-blown appraisal on the other side, the comps look good, I can't see any problem with them, looks to me like it's justified. If you agree, I'm recommending that you settle for the two hundred thousand dollars over our original because you will save attorney's fees, trial costs, et cetera, et cetera. Even if perhaps the land value amount didn't totally make that difference, but the saving of fees to you in going to trial and time and interest and all of that, that would be my recommendation. Sitting here today, I don't have a budget for you, but that can be turned around so that I can give you an idea on that length of time.
So hypothetically, could a jury make a recommendation?
They cannot. So what happens is if you, let me be very clear. I never recommend taking these to trial. You have to be really far apart because you're the bad guy. VDOT's, I'm always the bad guy, right? And they, their valuation is seventy-five times what this valuation is. And if you're going to trial, you are basically saying, okay, the win for the condemning authority is a straight split down the middle between the two valuations. Which means that if that split down the middle is more than it will cost you to go to trial, then you need to be working really hard to settle that in advance. Generally speaking, you're still the bad guy, the condemning authority is. Which is why Lisa brought me in at this point in time so that we're getting it worked on really early. So that we're not making it there. If you go to trial, you don't have any control anymore. I mean, you have your expert, you have your attorneys, everybody's experienced, but you are subject to the judge and jury getting a good night's sleep, late their lunch, fought with their kids on the way to school.
So let me just thank you, that was clear, but we do have potential exposure. And I, you know, I'm not going to dwell upon it, but that's something we should consider. Because I'm not getting the sense that people are eager to settle quickly.
At this point, I would say the issue is that the percentage apart that you are is so profound that it's worth requiring them to do a little bit more work to justify those percentages. There's a, one of the counteroffers is two hundred and fifty percent higher than our offer. And so we behoove the town to be able to, if the decision were ever audited, to be able to say, they gave us a good faith counteroffer and we analyzed it in conjunction with attorney's fees and costs and everything else and we agreed that we should take it. So that's the, that's the timing there.
No, and then I'll support this at the public hearing, but I think there is exposure here. I think potentially we need to think about what that sort of outcome is when you have non-commercial owners in the town on a jury when they're far apart.
I think I need to understand what you mean by exposure. I mean that the town takes a big hit.
Oh, yeah.
That's why we try not to go to trial.
Well, yeah, but try, but guess what, sometimes.
Ninety-eight percent of these cases settle, ninety-eight percent.
So just so you know, that all along, we will be coming back to council to advise you where we are with negotiations. And I'm sure the manager will be, if there's need to bring it to council for additional, you know, consideration of funding and to see where that funding can come from.
No, I get it, I just like planning, so I'm good.
At this point, we are obligated to build the buzz灯.
Anyone, have you spoken out a question? Okay, Sheila.
Just one comment on the condemnation here. More than once, I've gone to council meetings over the years, I've lived here, and when the council was trying to work on a property and trying to work with the owners, because it is next to impossible to condemn things that are not for the public good, we've had a lot of residents go forward and want things condemned. I know they wanted, where do you live, Bill McFinnam, council member? There were apartments there and there were people trying to get them condemned. And then we had a place where some other townhouses are, some older homes were there, same thing. And the council was just like, no, we can't do this. So I don't think if the citizens were on, unless they just don't want Metro, that they would be against our trying to have the access to that public land. I don't think that's going to be that big of a risk, just from what I've seen with our citizens over the years. Not just on council, but just as an act of citizen.
All right, so this has been really helpful. I'm going to tailor my comments and I'll send them to you in advance so that you can take a look and make sure we're covering all the issues that you think should be covered.
Any other questions?
Just think we also have a really good case study with Petunia Yards. They recently opened up and that didn't go the way that the landowners thought it would based upon geographical confluences and the fact that the train station wasn't opening up what they thought it would. But I do know that there was a substantial difference between what they thought the market price was and what Lamont had thought the price was. And they lost big time. So, in fact, it was on Kojo Nami a few years ago, but I remember that specifically and I asked a question about it. So, good case study, look at it.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
I meant to do this before we started our agenda this evening, but the chief is here and the councils and just, oh, do we have to? We're done with this whole issue or do we have the next one?
As far as I'm concerned, I'm going to step out.
Okay, you're looking at it like...
No, you're good.
All right, thank you. I mentioned this at the top of the meeting. I know it's on everyone's mind that we had an incident happen in town last night and the chief of police is here and I was going to ask if she would like to give us a quick, just a briefing on what happened last night, if there's anything that we, we need to know or...
Foot's asleep, sorry.
Sorry.
My whole body's asleep, actually.
We'll try to be more interesting in the next, in the next...
Yeah, no, I don't know if you could ever interest me that much. I had enough last night. Anyway, I'm going to share with you what I can share. There's some things we are not publicly ready to share at this point. But we had an incident, we had an officer involved shooting last night about seven twenty PM it happened. I first have to say what an amazing job our officers did. And I say ours because they belonged to all of us. And they did just a tremendous job with really extremely challenging resources limited on the street. There were only four people working last night in that window between five and eight, right? One was at the jail, so they had three people here and that was it. And when you have an incident of this magnitude and certainly this high of an active threat, it becomes extremely dangerous and extremely challenging. But basically, what I can share with you is the fact that the officer that was involved, and we have not publicly put his name out there yet, we will. There are procedures that we go through first to conduct threat assessments and those types of things to make sure that there are no safety issues before I decide whether I will release a name. And that won't happen until at least the next week or so, if we go there. But the officer involved was sitting in his cruiser, doing follow-up paperwork back in the downtown area, behind the fire station, basically. And there was a armed robbery that had just occurred up in one of the businesses in that area. The two victims were in that, in that business. And we're also not putting the business name out right now for a variety of reasons. We will get there as well. But there are some other parts of this that I can't share yet. But the main reason we are not doing that is to protect the victims at this point for a couple of reasons. But the victims, one of them especially, did an amazing job. And we'll go into more detail on that down the road when we're able to share the whole story. But did an amazing job and you notice that the officer's cruiser was parked outside through a security camera and was able to run down and alert the officer, which did one of two things. One, it kind of forced the suspects to flee, which was good. And number two, it gave the officer a heads up so he wasn't ambushing the cruiser. But basically, when the bad guys came out and fled, the officer immediately engaged them and again, had absolutely no notice on this. Got into a foot pursuit with both subjects. As he was chasing the subjects, giving verbal commands, one of the suspects actually turned and fired rounds at our officer and our officer returned fire back. Nobody was hit thankfully, either way, which is always a good thing. That subject then basically lost sight of him. The other subject was still closer by. Both of them appeared to be quite impaired in some manner or some things. So was not running quite as fast and struggling. And the officer was able to engage the second subject, attempted to tase him, that didn't work and was really struggling to try to get him to comply. And as he, as that subject was on the ground, he's trying to get him to comply or getting ready to, he was still actually on his feet at that point. The three, three individuals that we didn't know about were off duty, two of them were off duty DC police officers, one was a Fairfax Fire and Rescue EMT volunteer. They came out of nowhere and tackled the guy for our officer, which was very, very helpful because we, he had no help at that point, zero help. We were able to get cuffs on him, backup unit arrives. He gives an excellent lookout despite all the stress that he was under. Did an excellent job on that. And so the search is on for the other subject. Again, we only had, you know, three people there, our supervisor and two others at this point. And so they're doing the things that they need to do. It wasn't too long later that we get a call into dispatch for an attempted armed carjacking of the Guapos. And during that time, the subject who had been attempted to be carjacked had gone home. He had actually fought the subject and gotten away and actually was basically wrestling him with a gun and had gone home and called this in. So it was dispatched. I don't know how long later you weren't out there.
Yeah, I think it was thirty minutes.
Yeah, about thirty minutes or so later. Virginia State Police was monitoring the channels and they showed up very, very quickly. And the four, at least four of them were able to find the suspect still on the scene at Guapos and took him into custody. We later were able to recover the gun used in the incident. We believe he's, we know he was used in the carjacking, we believe he was used in the other incident as well. A couple of things that I did from my perspective, I made the decision to call Fairfax out to work this. We do not have the resources to work that multiple crime scenes, that complex crime scenes. We also don't have the experience to work an officer involved shooting, especially to that level. So they came out, I called Chief Rossler personally, he sent out the resources to me. They were extremely helpful, very professional. They are taking over the criminal investigation of that, including all three felony events. Because we have one at the first business, we have the shooting with the officer, and then we have the one up at Guapos. So we have three different felony incidents there. They are taking all of those because they are all related. So they're going to work it as one package. We are going to be conducting the internal affairs investigation, but the way this works is we won't do anything with that until the criminal investigation is done. So they will basically work the entire criminal investigation. They will turn it over to the common attorney who will make a determination, a criminal determination, whether the, you know, the force was justified in that situation. And then once that is done, we will conclude with ours. Couple of things, they are looking at, these suspects do not appear to be local. They've got to have localized somehow, we think, but they don't appear to live here. We think they're from Maryland, based on what we know. They have extensive criminal histories. We believe that they may be tied to similar types of cases over in Fairfax that they are looking at right now. We are working on that. But they are violent individuals and it was very, very helpful that everything fell in place, that we were able to get this done. They've been charged with robberies right now and there has been no charge with the shooting piece of that. There probably will not be for some time until the common attorney gets a chance to look at that. And generally, what will happen is they are in jail now with no bonds, so they're not going anywhere. And once he looks at that, makes a determination, they'll likely be in straight indictment on that for the shooting piece of that, which is how they generally take care of business there. Ultimately, they very well may result in an attempted capital murder charge with a police officer. There's no question that they knew that that was a police officer. The body camera footage was excellent and it was very helpful to us in that scenario for even trying to go back and look at the crime scene and recover evidence. It was very helpful for us to pinpoint locations and different things. So we have all that in place. The other thing that I will mention is, a couple of years ago in the budget, you all approved, I think it was about a twenty-five thousand dollar hit for a ABL system for our CAD system, which is basically a vehicle locator system for us, so that the dispatchers always know where the cruisers are. Well, I will tell you, it paid dividends last night. Because the dispatcher could not get his location because it happened so fast and he was trying to yell it out in the very, very heat of the moment. And she immediately was able to find out where his cruiser was. And they're never far from their cruiser when something happens quickly. And she was able to get back up there because she was able to see exactly where that cruiser was when he got online. So those, that's the reason why that system was installed, not to spy on my officers on like some of them, what some of them may think. But it paid dividends for us last night because we were able to quickly locate exactly where he was parked and send somebody there. So a lot of moving pieces. I've sent several thank yous out to the Virginia State Police Superintendent and others because everybody that came out last night truly was wonderful. Fairfax actually offered us their, their other services, including their psychologists and other things that we put in place to make sure that we are taking full care of our officer and anybody else involved in that incident, because that ultimately is most important to us. So we have full support on that last night and moving forward.
And Maggie's being modest and humble here somewhat. At the end of the day, this is the result of incredible hiring practices, phenomenal training, incredible leadership, standards and accountability that she enforces in that building every single day. And it just never ceases to amaze me when the volume gets turned up in this town, the day arrives to meet it, and meet it professionally and handle the business well. And I couldn't be more proud of what went on down there.
They did a great job and I'll tell you, you know, I have a lot of young officers, I have a lot of new officers who came from sheriff's departments who don't have exposure to these things. As a matter of fact, one of the reasons I was there at four thirty in the morning last night was because we have, none of our commanders had ever worked in officer involved shooting. So, you know, my job was to make sure that things were done. But to be honest with you, they had done their homework well enough, they were doing those things anyway, which is, was beautiful to me. So I was there more of a guiding piece for that. But everybody did the things that they needed to do to make sure that we were taking care of our officer and supporting the actual criminal investigation. So I got nothing but positive comments from Fairfax about our interactions with our officers, Virginia State Police troopers. But it, we had to call a lot of people in just to help last night. I mean, just dealing with prisoners and victims and, because we had a lot of people involved in that, an awful lot of people. Lots of moving parts. You might hear about people out there on the crime scene end tonight because they are still out there looking. You know, we had bullets that we don't know where they went, but we know nobody was struck and that's the important thing. But, you know, they're still trying to figure out where everything is and they did, you know, recover the things that we needed to do to know what happened, but they're still looking. So I told them, do not go out during school hours because I don't want people calling from the school to see you out there looking for possible rounds. But, so they waited until that was over, but they're out there, you know, still trying to... But, so they waited until that was over, but they're out there, you know, still trying to just follow up and doing the crime scene part of it in the daytime because by the time they came in last night, it was dark. So there's only so much you can do in the dark that you still want to go out and look at things in the daylight as well.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam here. Thank you. And thank you to police officers as well. It's probably too early for this, but if it's possible to get like a lessons learned looking back at this a couple of weeks or a couple of months out.
Well, we can't really even debrief it yet internally with everybody.
Well, that's why I said a couple of weeks, a couple of months, however long. And what you think you might need from counsel to address some of those needs? Nothing's perfect, so.
Yeah. You know, my biggest challenge as I talk to Bill is really staffing and positions. That's my biggest concern and, you know, when we have these windows where there's no overlap, we are really, really in a tight spot. But, you know, from a training perspective, they did the right things, from form perspective, from a mutual aid cooperation, all those pieces are there armed properly. You know, we had a rifle on the scene very quickly as a first backup officer. You know, those things are very good, I do know that. Lots of good pieces there. I haven't really found a lot of criticism yet, even from my viewpoint of doing it.
Technology, technology, both in terms of what's in the vehicle and the body cams.
Yeah, they were critical for us. And I can tell you Fairfax was very excited to have that because they don't have that luxury over there when they have a shooting.
Let me just throw this out, like drugs.
No, it's good. I will certainly come to you with a list if I think I need it. I'm never shy about doing that. I mean, staffing's a critical part. We were tight before this happened and just so you know, the officer involved will be taken offline until a criminal determination is made. That could take a couple of months. So we would have to use him in a very restricted, it means I'm eating a spot there and I'm already really tight because of other things right now. So we are literally juggling. As a matter of fact, Corporal Forbach here, I have bounced him around in the last two weeks, I think to four different squads, literally, just to plug holes. And then, okay, we plug them on this hole and now this hole is bigger than that hole. I moved him to a squad a week, a couple of days ago and now I have moved him right back to cover another absence. So he is incredibly flexible. We call him our free agent or Renaissance. What does he do to have to move?
And yoga instructor.
He doesn't have kids and other things that make it easier to move.
Thank you, Officer Forbach.
And he's very flexible with us, so it works out great. But, you know, it's truly, I get concerned more about a staffing issue. The type of crime that we dealt with last night, these are bad dudes, they're off the street and that's a good thing, but these can happen anytime, anywhere, and when they do, they are just resource hogging things. My bigger concern is just stabilizing the safety of it because we can always get help to work them like we did last night. You know, you can always get mutual aid to work the scenes. But they, you know, it's the safety of stabilizing the event are always the biggest concern for me, not the, we got it stabilized, now we just need help to work it. That part's easy. We can always get help for that.
Yes. I want to commend you for your relationship with Fairfax County and the other law enforcement because I think that was key in getting everything wrapped up as well as it was. Are you noticing any changes in Herndon as far as criminal activity? Because I'm noticing a lot more violent activity, not a lot more.
I was going to say, our stats don't support that.
I'm noticing more, and not just in the town, but on the outskirts of town.
Our stats don't support a rise in violent crime here at all, but, you know, we had, for instance, we've had two homicides this year. We solved both of those very quickly. Now, I will tell you, both of them were people who knew each other and some were domestic related. They happen all the time and they're not preventable. It's a response that matters and we dealt with those and we dealt with them very swiftly. The type events we had last night, arms robberies happen all the time. You know, they're not infrequent necessarily, but when the bad ones happen, you know, as, like I said, this may turn out to be connected to others. They're just bouncing around doing their thing. Herndon's not in a bubble, we're not immune to that. It just happened to be, you know, one of those bad cases last night. So we were fortunate to be there, unfortunate, unfortunate, I'm not so sure, but fortunate the way it worked out. But our stats don't really support a rise in violent crime. Some things go up, some things go down, but overall, it really has not been, not been...
That's good to hear because lots of people, whenever there's anything big and flashy, everybody says, oh, we're going down the tubes.
You know, the part about why Herndon, why Herndon, Herndon is no different with anywhere else in this country. And I have a very close friend that I ride unit tour with who's a major up in Dayton. And, you know, why Dayton? Well, Dayton's not immune either. It just, it can happen anywhere. So you just have to always keep that in mind. What's important is the community stays involved so that we always get information and there's a very involved community here and that we are, continue to be prepared from a response perspective to mitigate anything that happened. And last night, we were able to, you know, get hold of that with a lot of help very quickly.
Thanks, that was welcome. Chief, thank you. I'm sure like me, like many of us heard about this last night, kind of as it was happening, there was a lot of activity about it, right? Online and otherwise. I had friends that were at Jimmy's. It was obvious to me they weren't, well, it was likely obvious that the suspects weren't from around here because otherwise you wouldn't do that anywhere near Jimmy's where you would have a lot of first responders and some of those folks, but, because I know they, I'm really glad that they were able, that your officers had some help from that. But I say that in jest, but to some extent, just that was the timing of that where you do have a bunch of people outside where they were able to help. But thank you for all that you did and for your officers.
I appreciate living in the neighborhood. You secure the perimeter very well, so.
That took a few minutes. That definitely took a few minutes. We've got some bodies up there.
Well, the thing is, I mean, it's never the event, it's the aftermath and how it's handled so you can make sure that you get convictions because the one thing, it's like anything else, I mean, if you have, if people know they're going to get caught and convicted, they tend not to go, they go someplace else. So I was very happy that I had a little difficulty getting back to where I needed to go.
I think we had that locked down so it pretty...
Oh, no, it's all good.
And it's a little more difficult to work a crime scene in the dark when you're looking for sub two.
Right, right.
So that was the big issue.
So my son came by this evening. He lives over off of Alabama, close to where we had a fatality several months ago. And he go, Mom, I was at McDonald's and it was like, I don't know how many police cars that were down there. It was crazy. What happened? So I said, well, it's all been taken care of. I don't know yet, but he was glad here and he took care of it.
So relative to how we typically make this available to the public, anything different here in terms of what we're going to communicate?
It's already been communicated. Yeah, we put out a, well, we put out a social media post last night, but we're not going to provide, you know, any real details to the investigation while it's ongoing.
Okay.
Yeah. At some point when we can give updates, we will work with Fairfax to do that, but they have some things that they need to do before we start releasing any other information.
Thank you.
And it's, certainly we'll make that call with them and the common attorney who will be saying what he does and does not want released, including, you know, we won't release any of the body camera footage while this is being actively investigated. We just will not do that.
Good. Well, thank you, Chief.
I hope you'll send our regards to the officer that was involved because I don't know, I can't imagine the stress that is putting on him and his family or her and her family. I don't know who was there.
He's doing remarkably well considering, but yeah, we have, you know, we have peer support built into our department as well. We used that last night to be with the officer the entire time and that worked out really well, so.
Well, I want to echo everyone's comments, especially what the town manager said about the organization. And I think the real takeaway here is that it was resolved quickly and safely. No one was hurt. People are kind of frantic about it because it doesn't happen often and that's also a good thing.
That's a very good thing because otherwise they'd be immune to it like they are in some cities and it's just, it's not even worth talking about. So when it becomes big news, then that tells you that this is an area that does not see that very often, so that's positive.
So thank you for that update. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. And as we can make more information available, we certainly will.
And everything that was shared tonight is obviously public.
Yeah, right. Yeah, there's so many.
It is now.
No, I want to make that clear because people aren't always sure, so I will make that clear.
Yeah, I mean, that stuff that was discussed on the news and different parts of that, then we provided that during news briefings and stuff, you know, just today alone, Julie Carey came by the station, then she went up and she interviewed three guys at Jimmy's and they put that piece on, that was very well done. She did with that. So yeah, I'm not giving you anything that hasn't been out in the news or anything like that.
I just want to make that clear because we are, I'm sure we're all getting a lot of questions and it's fine to share what was shared here this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for indulging on that. We'll move into our general item, which is a resolution to establish the town council meeting schedule for 2020. And town clerk is here for staff report.
Well, thank you. First, I want to point out that I am going to have a revised resolution for next week. I left off federal, one, two, third bullet. It's the federal count, state in-county elections on that day. So this is an opportunity while we have the annual town calendar underway to consider any modifications that you want so that it can be printed. This year, there's only four proposed for your review. The first one is going to be in August. We have National Night Out and traditionally it's, we push the work session to that following Wednesday. Then on Tuesday, October 13th, we'd like to push that, public hearing to October 14th since you will be in DML conference. That runs October 9th through the 13th. They'll be returning on the 13th. Then the election's going to be Tuesday, November 3rd. So since it is a large election, push that work session to November 4th, which is a Wednesday. And then the last proposed, recommended is to forego the last two meetings in November to accommodate any Thanksgiving holiday travel. And that's what we have here consideration.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I noticed the election one too, and I would just say, yeah, add federal and you might even want to add town because it is, it'll be the town election this year too, so. It says state, county, so you might want to say federal, state, county, town. I don't even know that there's many state and county next year, but let's just lump it all in in case something happens.
It's federal and town.
The town election that quick already?
Yeah.
I'm running nearby.
Because technically, our state and county ones are off years, but let's just lump it all in just in case.
Yes.
Are you kind of lumping?
The only question that I was going to throw out there was, since we already are not, we have two weeks after the 17th and the 24th, but we want to push everything to be the work session on the 10th and the public hearing on the 17th rather than just bumping it by one day to Wednesday?
We're talking about when?
In November, 2020. I'm asking if that's something that we would want to consider rather than...
Sorry, what are you proposing? At least last May, November?
I'm asking if in November 2020, if we would want to consider making the work session on the 10th and the public hearing on the 17th. I don't have a preference. It's just there was room to move it around there and I didn't know if that would...
Cancel the full week. I got you. The first week.
So the work session for the 10th and then the public hearing on the 17th.
Well, I'm not hearing a bunch of people jumping in. I just thought I would throw that out there since there's space. It would still not interfere with the Thanksgiving holiday, but this is fine as well.
I'd rather keep it the way it's listed personally. Okay.
I'd support that if we look into canceling classes at the community center because Herndon two, voting is a pain in the butt. You get a big crowd in the morning or in the evening and then you have people doing their classes, which is great, but it honestly, it prevents people from voting because the parking lot is tight.
There is a lot of congestion with the annual park.
It's an issue. I've seen it for a long time, especially, I think this is going to be a big turnout year, by the way.
Right. Presidential, I'm sure.
And I just think if we can make that happen, it'll go a long way to having more people vote.
We can make that happen.
I mean, I think that it would also...
Thank you.
I think it would also help the people who are trying to get to their classes because they're just as frustrated as anybody else, maybe more frustrated than the voters.
And that's why they don't have school on those Tuesdays in November because...
So we can make that happen whether it's on the 3rd or the 11th.
That's what I'm hearing from his body then. We control it.
Okay.
Before we move on, I just, hold on.
I want to make sure, I wanted to make sure I supported just not having any meeting that week and to the mayor's point, having the work session on the 10th and the public hearing on the 17th, I think makes sense because for a lot of people, Election Day is really Election Week, so.
It's exhausting.
Well, and to me, having it on a Tuesday night means I won't forget to do it, which is key.
There is that.
But if you...
Well, I'm only hearing three people that think that's a good idea, so yeah.
I'd rather keep it the fourth.
I'm fine with what you stated as well.
The 10th and 17th?
Yeah.
That's right.
I'm fine with 10th and 11th because early elections, so what is going to be?
10th and 17th, 10th and 11th is pretty tough to do.
And separately from that, we're going to look at the monthly classes.
I'm already doing it.
Write an email already, okay.
Already doing it.
So before we finish this, if we're done with November, well, I think we are because I heard four people say they supported the 10th and 17th.
Yeah.
At least four, that's the magic number.
Another point I wanted to bring up that I just caught myself is that in October, we don't have five Tuesdays. So the way the Tuesdays go with DML, the public hearing will be on a Wednesday night rather than a Tuesday night.
Oh, that's fun.
But we'll make sure we publicize that very clearly so that the citizens or individuals know that it's not Tuesday.
Because DML is late this year, that year.
Yes, it is.
Sign 4 and 5 or something like flash it.
And the other thing, we're done with November and, if you're going to, are you going to a different month to talk about the other? And let me just throw this in, a question. So for October, we usually do push our meeting to be Wednesday because the conference is usually over on Tuesday, but do we all stay? I mean, I feel like a lot of people come back early and then we still have pushed it. So is that based on whether the culminating event of the conference is lunch or a banquet and then I do meetings?
And they don't post the agenda.
Norfolk, isn't it? Like Norfolk, isn't it there again?
I think it might be the Hampton Road area this year.
That's like a five or...
It's a long drive. We're talking about 2020, not this year.
No, I know. We're in Jersey Road.
But that's a long way to come back.
No, okay. I just think the point is we've got to make sure we get the word out that the public hearing is on the 14th.
And I'll work with the chief information officer to make sure that we get it well out and we will not know what their Tuesday activities will be until it gets closed. And then Sheila, did you have a question about December?
I'm just throwing it out there because one year, St. Patty's Day was on a Tuesday and we changed it at the last minute. So if there's anybody here or a majority that want to change it.
We talk a break?
We need to know now and not wait until...
Why would we change it for St. Patrick's Day?
Because I know I had a meeting and had to, you know, rush out of my work meeting on the 18th to run to a council meeting because it got changed for St. Patty's Day. So I think we should do that now instead of waiting until a future day.
What's our justification for not having a meeting on St. Patrick's Day?
I have no idea. It's happened before and I'm just saying.
You're just saying if we're going to do it, let's do it now?
If we're going to do it, let's do it because I plan my schedule by when our meetings are supposed to be. And I don't like to miss it.
Catholic, I must make with my sister's birthday the same day.
Okay. I have no desire to celebrate St. Patrick's Day except to...
I'm fine with keeping it that way.
Yes.
So no change in March? So no change in March?
No change in March.
So just to recap, I am going to change it to Edward's federal and town. Thank you. Then also, we are going to change the, um, work session in November. We will have a work session the election week. We'll have the work session the tenth and the public hearing seventeenth. I will work closely with, um, Ann Curtis. We'll publicize it. The legal ad will state it very clearly.
And then there will still be no meeting the week of Thanksgiving, which was.
Correct, and that's the forego, the work session and, um, public hearing. And then I will send an email to, uh, Bill, um, tomorrow morning and remind him about the law. He doesn't need reminding, but I'll close the loop on my end. About canceling the classes at the community center.
I've already sent that to Cindy. You're reminded.
Okay.
All right.
And, um, with these changes, are you comfortable with putting it on the consent agenda?
She wants to get out of work this week.
I'm fine with it being on the consent agenda. There's no other.
I'll make sure all the changes are made.
And people will still have opportunity to, uh, comment or anything. I'll make sure that we're clear about that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So that, thank you, Vicky. That does bring us to the consent agenda. There are several items on here and staff is available if you have questions or comments or concerns about any of the consent agenda items. And of course, if there's anything that you would like to pull off to be a general, we can certainly do that.
I think some, the Shandon Trail one, it would be nice if that was on the.
To award the contract?
Yeah, and the, and the reason I say that is just because it's a very cool thing that we're, that's being done and, and people might not know about it. We don't, I mean, I don't need a long presentation.
Fine with me.
Okay.
You don't get next Tuesday off.
Oh, I wasn't gonna.
So we got to pull off number item thirteen, the Shandon Park Trail improvements to be on the general agenda.
If that's okay with everybody.
If one person wants to pull up. Um, do you want to hear about it tonight too? Do you want to give us a brief?
I can.
And I'm sure it's a brief update anyway, so we'd love to hear about it.
Brought my material just in case. So the award of, uh, Shandon Park Trail improvements, basically just a refresher on this. Um, as part of the HAN-SAN, as we like to call this one, Herndon Metro, Herndon Metro Rail Station Access Management Study Program, which is administered by the county, they identified that the section of trail between the World Gate apartment, condos, whatever they are right now, and Dulles Green Apartments was the initial section that was to be improved. That was a grant that we received. It was for a total of five hundred thousand dollars for design and construction. The design was completed, uh, actually about probably six months ago. Then when we got to trying to negotiate a landing point for the Dulles Green Apartments side, the proposed location was not going to work well with them and their property management folks because it kind of was in conflict with where they had their maintenance operations. So it took us a little while. We made an adjustment. We're now tying into Dulles Glen Apartments up closer to Herndon Parkway, which actually is a longer section of trail now, but it probably is more convenient for the majority of people because it actually can collect people from the actual sidewalk up at Herndon Parkway as opposed to just coming through the apartment complex. Long story short, the advertisement went out, um, on July sixteenth of this year. Had a pre-bid. On August thirteenth, we received six bids. The overall budget, like I said, was five hundred thousand. After we were done with the design work, I believe we had approximately four hundred or four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for construction. Low bid was the Kaufman Group at three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And this award is recommending a work to the Kaufman Group.
Questions or concerns?
And, uh, assuming this is, uh, approved, we'll give them notice to proceed. The idea is to try to get this started and complete before the end of the year.
Questions or comments? Sounds good. Okay. Thank you very much. That's exciting. Uh, that brings us to roundtable. Who wants to start us off? Phil.
Just, uh, went to the Labor Day Festival yesterday on Labor Day, uh, so the festival is then, um, so.
When was it again?
Yes, it was, um, it was really great. The only thing I would, um, just make one recommendation is that in years past, it was twenty-five dollars for, you know, wine or beer tastings. And this year it was like an either or proposition when you got to the door, so.
It's the woman's book though. It's not really, no one here is making the decision.
Understand that, just putting it out there as a matter of public record. But that's, um, you know, just comments on that. So that, but other than that, because that's, a lot of people are asking about that. So that's why, you know.
I had, I thought the same thing. I didn't like that decision.
No, this was.
Because they only just started the beer part.
Yeah.
Just until what?
Last year, years before, when they started beer, two, three years ago, they were, but then this year it was either or proposition. I mean, not a big deal, but, um, people were noticing it.
Some fussing.
Some fussing, yes, so. That's all. Everything was great though. It was a little warm yesterday, but other than that, it was fantastic.
Couldn't talk to the vice chairman about the weather. That's you. Uh, thanks, Phil.
Yeah, sure.
Who, um, who, who's up next? Cindy?
Uh, I just wanted to again thank the organizers and volunteers for the Labor Day Wine Festival. Thank the staff for, uh, making a copy of the CIP for us, which I very much appreciate. I'm glad you're visiting. I would like to know, uh, what the updated schedule is for us having some new HPRV guidelines because I read the HP or I watched the HPRV hearing and noticed that, um, it's becoming very difficult for, for the, um, HPRV to make decisions.
I will tell the government as to go and who has their pulse on that project.
Let's see, two weeks ago, I think it was, the consultants came up, um, and they met with the staff to go over the latest draft. And, um, they still have several, um, comments they need to address, staff comments. And we're also trying to work with them to refine some of the illustrations. But I would say at this point, um, it's, it's nearing completion. And I was anticipating having a new schedule by now. But we're still working with a consultant to get a new schedule. But I will let you know as soon as, as soon as they have something. But it's looking, I will say it's looking really good. There's a lot of it there. Really, one of the things staff is trying to work with them on is to, I hate to call it jargon, but, um, you know, within the profession, architecture, historical preservation, there are terms people use all the time. And, um, we're trying to make certain that we're using terms that are easily understood by the board and by the general public, even though this document is primarily for the board. And where there isn't another term that you're catching it and making sure it's qualified. So those are some of the things that we're working on. And also getting some very good illustrative examples, be it photographs or. So we're, we're still working on that step.
So do you think it would be like two months or, or more or less?
I'd like to, I would like to say two months, um, I mean, unfortunately, it's taking longer than we expected it to take. And so once it ends up taking a little longer, then consultants tend to have their schedules pitched as well because they of course have like the resources as well. So, um, I'm, I hope it's not too much. I think that's probably a pretty good guess, but I will let you know as soon as we tie it down to a month.
Okay, because timing is really at the essence and I appreciate it. And the other thing I noticed about that, um, meeting was that everybody spoke so quickly. It was very hard to understand what they were saying, so, um, the staff, um, slowed down a little bit. But other than that, thank you. That was great.
Hey, who's up next?
I'll go next. Um, so a couple of my notes are just, question, you know, when we get emails to the whole council and then it's like staff will take care of that, so just a couple of things, just so we're all closing the loop. There was two people that sent us, well, I'll say form letters on the risks of five G. Does anyone know where that's coming from and if there was any commentary back?
I'm just plugging and getting rid of.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's fine. I just was curious if anyone.
I actually didn't have those, which is unusual.
I've had a couple of queries by a couple of members of the council.
Unless it went to.
And I've responded back saying that, um, in essence, Lysa Gates is on vacation. And that, uh, this has, even entertain this would be have serious legal implications because of state law and FCC.
Like I didn't reply to those because I'm like.
So I was begging you all off until Lisa returned and couldn't figure.
But I will say this. That, um, I expect that we are getting what the FCC has been getting for many years now. I mean, this came with cell towers too.
Yeah.
Um, it is a, um, grassroots, you know, organized sort of movement that, um, is deployed throughout all the different states.
Yeah.
And every state is going through a five G.
Yeah.
Some states have more, um, regulation than we do, but as you recall, a few years ago, we went through the state regulations that were enacted. Then, and that, we were, uh, FCC was lagging a little bit behind state. And then all of a sudden, the FCC shot forward and they entered an order that took effect behind state last year. And, um, it has made it federal regulations now. So you're just hearing what has been out there, I suspect. I am going to check with other jurisdictions when I return to work next week, just to make sure, but I'm pretty sure they're getting that too.
And just to be clear, the FCC ruling that she's talking about limits what an elected body can do to restrict access to jurisdiction.
Even more than, than the state.
Right.
Even, there is even more limitations than what the state.
Because I'm just.
I, sorry, I have to take the contrary view.
No, please.
Um, so it's written that way because people lobby for laws to be written a certain way. So I don't know that that's necessarily the reason to discount this. I mean, I would like to be more informed. I'm not a conspiracy theorist by any means, but I'm gonna research that the 5G summit dot com thing. I'm not gonna respond, but I want to be informed. I like to hear all the evidence, all the sides, so. That's what I'm gonna do.
I would also look at the NIST website, National Institute, um, you know, standard of technology because they, they cleared five G in regards to.
I think it's okay.
Yeah.
I think it's okay, but my, my, my position is because something is, something's only a rule or a law until it's not.
Right.
And that's, I, I respect what you're saying.
But the point is, while it is, your, your exposure risk is more of being sued by Verizon than it is being sued by.
I wouldn't be sued. The body would be sued.
Right, that bums your saying.
I personally.
Us, we collectively.
Okay, good. So I'll be happy to give you any information you like about where those letters came from.
That'd be great.
Part of those group, group of people, whatever we can find out.
That, that's.
Yeah.
What I'm looking.
But certainly, please, um, certainly, please feel free. I know some of the, been on council for a while and heard the, are aware of the history of it in Virginia.
Yeah, yeah, and they're two, like clearly two just formatted letters, right? They're identical. And came from two different individuals within town.
Uh, no, one is outside of town.
Oh, one is outside of town.
So one's out.
Okay, I didn't look too closely.
So I was able to reply because I'm running the town jurisdiction. But the other one is from the town, so.
Mm-hmm.
I have a reply, but yeah, I also checked that website and I'm gonna check more because we have to go to websites.
So the other one along those, well, not quite similar lines, but Barry, Barry's, um, request about Bee Hives. Has that been, has he been responded to? And again, I know we're like weeks old now because we haven't met as a body, so. I'm sorry if I'm dredging up old email stuff, but it just was.
I, I, we are struggling with response to Barry because it didn't seem like as if, um, this body was interested in pursuing that. And that's just how to luckily tell it now without getting you all in that spot. So we're wrestling with that.
I did get that one, okay.
Yes.
Um, that's fine with me for now. Um, and then the last thing is, so a new topic to just share with this body. This is just sort of an FYI. I'll be coming back to you with more info later. But a citizen, um, brought to my attention something interesting and cool he wants to do. And he's also working with John D., the arborist, um, to create this like her new family tree project. And so the thought is that we would have folks donate, uh, donate money towards buying trees. And then we would have like a volunteer day. We would have a plaque and just to try to, again, we're already a tree city, so something along those lines of like planting more trees in town and making it an annual event and, um, getting your name on a plaque or in memory of or in honor of or whatever. So, um, if anyone's interested and wants to talk to me more about it or wants to meet, to engage with the citizen and with John, by all means, um, welcome to. Uh, it's just, the citizen has talked to me a couple of times about it, so I wanted to at least mention it to this body. And then, um, so it's, I'm gonna keep working with him on and figure out how much the town can be involved, right? Or whether we need to sort of, you know, we do need, I think John's help could be really useful, but whether this is kind of a town event or whether this is not a event, but you know what I mean? Um, something we can help even, you know, with runny meat or something, right? So those types of things. Yeah, Arbor Day, exactly, something like that. So more on that, but that, that's all I have. Okay, cool. Who's up next?
Um, I was looking for an apology as well. I'm really good with my phone, but I did get an email about the festival. They loved it.
The Labor Day Festival?
Yeah. I did get a question. Center Street and Fort Knight Avenue. Looks great. Looks awesome. Um, Fort Knight and River, those papers. I didn't, I can't find those on the CIP.
They're there.
Can you point them to me? Because I, I could sidewalks. Yeah, but.
For nicely.
Yeah, specifically.
I believe it's C, F Y twenty-one.
Okay. Thank you. That would help me. And, um, that's it.
Okay, that's it.
So I did also go to the wine, uh, beer slash, um, vendor festival. And it was awesome. I've got my questions here somewhere, but mine, I'm sure doesn't want to open. So I thought that was really good. The trash pickup, I think is going awesome with the new dates. I just thought I would pass that on, so DPW knows. We all got ours, our recycled out last night instead of Sunday night because we had the holiday and they came by and got it redone, so that went well. If we do decide to discuss the bees, I do have a bee expert that I would like to bring in because anytime I've ever been stung, it's never been a honeybee, so I grew up by honeybees. And that's part of our sustainability. On two issues with the HPRV. One is, there seems to be some talk on social media that the HPRV is against Wi-Fi at a certain business. I don't think that's the HBR, I don't think that's anywhere in their prerogative. Is that true? Because I saw it online and I thought, that's interesting. I'm not touching that with a ten-foot pole. But we don't have any HPRV guidelines unless we're not going to let someone sort of monopole on their property. Now, I understand that, but to actually have Wi-Fi at a business?
Have no idea.
That's, okay. I'll have to send you that because I saw that and I thought. Okay, that is.
Sounds like I might have gotten lost in translation.
Because if that's the case, do we have to tell all of our homes that are historic that they have to get rid of their Wi-Fi?
That's a positive role if we could do that.
I know.
If somebody wants a dish, let's say they're using a dish instead of some other form of.
So maybe they were trying to get a dish or something, but yes.
If they want a dish, the HPRV can recommend ways to screen it, replace it, but they can't keep it from being able to pick up the, the actual.
That's what I thought, but I thought, well, maybe they know something I don't know. I wanted to bring it to you.
Sounds like incorrect.
Now, the other thing is I did watch the last HPRV and the applicant didn't like the answer and just kept talking from the audience that they wanted, you know, where do, like, how do I file an appeal? And I just thought, well, for instance, it goes, I'll just go online and see how easy it is because I know you can appeal, but I couldn't find the form. So maybe we need to make that form to appeal the decision of an HPRV, of the HPRV. Because I found the BZA form very easily, but I couldn't find that.
We'll take a look at that.
Yeah.
I do know the individual wasn't contacted staff, I believe, the next day and staff.
Because I know you can do it, but I wasn't able to find the form either, so. And the forms that I found seemed to have a cost to them, and I thought, well, maybe it has no cost to it and that's why it's not with this group, but.
I'll, I'll check with.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right. Uh, the only thing I had was I wanted to thank Barbara who found Mayor Kidwell's picture.
Oh, my goodness.
Which is so funny, but it sort of came out of that letter that we got from the veterinarian.
Someone from the, no, it came out of that article and the connection, but it was a guy at the Virginia Room, an archivist, who saw the article and then found it and then said.
So where is it?
It's, uh, he's over here.
Yeah, there he is. So why was it so hard to find that picture?
I don't know.
Because it's not even a really old picture.
I know.
But well, welcome to the wall, Mayor Kidwell. Thank you, Barbara.
She's a.
How many do we have?
Rager Columbo.
Five. Five thousand. All right, so. We should have a contest or something, try to find the mayor.
He thinks, where's Waldo's Walden?
There's Walden. All right, but thank you. We appreciate that. Um, Mr. Tomlin, where we have this. That concludes our agenda this evening. Our mayor, seeing no other business, I'm gonna play a chimer. Second. Always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And as it goes.
I'm looking for you. I'll see you guys.
I saw that, it's not going on.